I've got Chad arrives and we can start.
Good evening, my name is Lloyd Gai, I'm the Assistant Attorney General for the Rosebud Sioux Tribe. I was directed to be here by not only the Attorney General but the Education Committee of the Rosebud Sioux Tribal Council. And speaking directly about the condition of the building, the asbestos is kind of a concern, but I'll get to that in a moment. First off, why are our kids in a building that's been condemned? If this were any other place in the United States, those kids wouldn't be in the building. I guess it's kind of come to counsel that why would we allow our kids or why would we expect our kids to be treated any different than any kids anywhere else? Just know that that's kind of a concern. I myself contacted the DIA and spoke to a gentleman named LaBelle about the condition of the building. And he's provided me a pretty extensive inspection that happened, looks like last May. And the conditions are pretty shocking. I will say that it's kind of a huge concern and I think one of the questions that the Rosebud Sioux Tribe is asking is basically, what are we going to do about this building? I've been informed that we're looking at site selection, but nobody's done a survey or anything like that. So as I'm on Mary's two minutes, I'll go ahead and give whatever's left back to her. Thank you.
Hold on a minute, okay. I have another thing. Why can't the district purchase two modular buildings and put them out there for our students? We do not want our kids bussed over here. This is their school, they love it. And I have to say, Vicky is doing a very good job out there, but you guys need to help her.
Hi guys, some of you know me, my name's Stephanie and I pipe and I'm a parent community member. I also had an issue with the Argus News Leader and I did speak with Dr. Whitney about it with my concerns. And I kind of got, there's nothing they can do about it, it was already printed. I guess they had a meeting or whatever on Thursday with the journalist or reporter and she refuses to retract it or anything. I guess, I don't know, am I allowed to ask questions? Because I kind of would like to know and I think a lot of people would like to know, who authorized for this reporter to come to do this story? Was it a board decision? Was it a school decision? Or does anybody know? Because nobody gave me that answer when I asked it. Who authorized this lady to come do this?
Marchos Spani, I was the board supervisor studying with him through the Department of Education. And from that, he suggested that she wanted to do this story. And he was teaching at that school. She also wanted to talk about, she was a resident of the school district. And he said, she said, there must be more to this story than this test course. Yeah, there are more to our kids than test courses, there's lots more to our kids. She said, how I got her knows, she said that Linda Bordeaux, she had a conversation with her and that Linda had given her my contact information. And so from there, I agreed with her and then we set up some time to record the story.
Okay, so then when you guys decide, when you decided to let this lady come in and do the story, is there a process that you guys usually follow? Is there a policy and procedure? Or do we just let anybody come in and write whatever they want and take whatever pictures they want? Is that a board policy or is there any kind of policy on that?
To my knowledge, it's not a policy that addresses that.
So, because I asked these questions to the superintendent and she, I asked who gave, where did she get her stats? Where did she get her information? Where did she get her numbers? You know, to throw this out there, especially about the curriculum, especially about the reading scores and all this. And you know, there's really no clear answer either. She don't know where she got it, off of the state website maybe? When I got into the permission slip for the pictures, where did you get that? She told me that this permission form here, the Todd County School District permission form that everybody signs at the beginning of the year, gave Todd County the right to share this information with anybody. Now that's kind of troubling to me because as a parent, I would expect this to be for Todd County School District usage only. Not to allow some random reporter to come and share my kids' pictures across the world. I guess that's another clarification for me is if that is, if this is, if that is true, what she is saying that this gave them permission, I think we need to really seriously redo this form and make parents aware that by signing this, you're allowing anybody, you're allowing Todd County to give that information to anybody and share those pictures with anybody. You know, like these guys said, those are legitimate concerns. They're afraid for their children. Their children's pictures are now out there. Had it been done differently, had there been a policy and procedure or whatever to monitor this or, you know, just not let...
So, I just, we just want answers. Why, who let this exploit? And, um, I mean, like I said, you know, pointing fingers. We need answers. The legislators, I talked to, we talked to legislators. They told us, this article was intended for a grant for the school. I saw no, nothing to do with that grant in this article. I saw, um, like a money figure, that's all I saw. But it was nothing that said about the intention. So, we are asking for retraction and, you know, we don't. Our meetings are, we invite everybody. And we, we don't want the board members, you know, talking, you know, did you go to that meeting? Or did you go, we, we want everybody to be there. We're not hiding anything. We're not hiding nothing. We welcome anybody. You know, our kids, we, we are welcomed. They sang, we prayed, and you know, that's how it should be. But, no, our kids, you know, exploiting them in this manner is just, it was just wrong.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Next, we have Mary Standing Out.
Yes, my name is Mary Standing Out. I have three sons attending He Dog School. I have a preschooler, third grader, and a fifth grader. Uh, my concern that the art, uh, the article, an argus leader is at the school, was recommended by BIA to be condemned and demolished. My question is, why and are my kids safe? Because I've had them out for a week until I get answers. Um, now, if there's asbestos in there, is there a notice posted somewhere in the building? Um, as a parent, I've been out there for, my kid's been here three years. We haven't received any kind of notice, um, from here. Um, let's see, and I know there was raw sewage downstairs, because my son told me. He said, the day after that, they were made to sit downstairs for that day, and then, um, they were put upstairs. Um, and Vicky fought for them to move upstairs when somebody wanted them downstairs. So, um, what are you doing to correct this? How are you gonna assure us that our children are safe? That's what I want to know. This paper, that little picture under, that's my little boy. So, yes, you did exploit him. And my husband would be here, but he's contacting an attorney. So, um, I just wanna know how you're gonna fix this. And another thing, um, because of this article where our children was exploited, you label them poor, dumb, broken homes, poverty stricken. We're far from that. I'm, I am, I'm, my kids have what, have their needs. And I'm sure you're getting donation calls, people call in to donate. Who's handling that? What are you doing with that? How much time do I have left? You know, my time too.
Good evening, my name is Lloyd Guy. I'm the Assistant Attorney General for the Rosebud Sioux Tribe. I was directed to be here by not only the Attorney General, but the Education Committee of the Rosebud Sioux Tribal Council. And, uh, speaking directly about, um, the condition of the building, um, the asbestos is a, is kind of a concern. I'll get to that in a moment. First off, why are our kids in a building that's been condemned? If this were any other place, um, in the United States, those kids wouldn't be in the building. Um, I guess it's, it's kind of come to counsel that, why would we allow our kids, or why would we expect our kids to be treated any different than any kids anywhere else? Um, just know that that's kind of a concern. I myself contacted the BIA and spoke to a gentleman named LaBelle about the condition of the building. And he's provided me a pretty extensive inspection that happened, looks like last May. And the conditions are, are pretty, pretty, pretty shocking. Um, I will, I will say that, that it's, it's kind of a huge concern. And I think one of the, um, one of the questions that the Rosebud Sioux Tribe is, is asking is, is, is basically, what are we going to do about this building? Um, I've been informed that, that we're looking at site selection, but, but nobody's done a survey or anything like that. Um, so, um, as I'm on, uh, Mary's two minutes, I'll go ahead and give those, whatever's left back to her. Thank you.
Hold on. Huh, wait a minute, okay. Um, I have another thing. Why can't the district purchase two modular buildings and put them out there for our students? We do not want our kids bust over here. Um, this is their school, you know, they love it. And, um, I have to say, Vicky is doing a very good job out there. But you guys need to help her.
Thank you. Um, Stephanie.
Hi, guys. Some of you know me, my name's Stephanie, I pipe, and I'm, um, a parent community member. Um, I had also had a issue with the Argus Newsletter. And I did speak with, um, Dr. Whitney about it with my concerns. And, um, I kinda got, there's nothing they can do about it, was already printed. Um, I guess they had a meeting or whatever on Thursday with the journalist, a reporter, and she refuses to retract it or, um, anything. I guess, I don't know, am I allowed to ask questions? Because I kinda would like to know, and I think a lot of people would like to know, you know, who authorized for this reporter to come to do this story? Was it a board decision? Was it a school decision? Or does anybody know? Cause it kinda, nobody gave me that answer when I asked it. Who, who authorized this lady to come do this?
Marchos standing eyes, but she said she was studying with him. He's the department of Indian education. And from that, he suggested that she wanted to do this story. And he goes, which he was at that school. She also wanted to talk about, she was all about it, the school district. And he said, he said, there must be more to this story than this test course. Yeah, there are more to our kids than test course. There's lots more to our kids. She said, how I got her knows, she said that Linda Bordeaux, she had a conversation with her, and that Linda had given her my contact information. And so, from there, I agreed with her. And then we set up some time to record the story.
Okay, so then, um, when you guys decide, when you decided to let this lady come in and do the story, is there a process that you guys usually follow? Is there a po- policy and procedure? Um, or do we just let anybody come in and write whatever they want and take whatever pictures they want? Is that a board policy, or is there any kind of policy on that?
To my knowledge, it's not a policy that addresses that.
So, so, because I asked these questions to the superintendent, and she, I asked who gave, you know, where did she get her stats? Where did she get her information? Where did she get her, um, numbers? You know, to throw this out there, especially about the curriculum, especially about the, um, reading scores and all this. And, you know, there's really no clear answer either. She don't know where she got it, off of the state website maybe. Um, when I got into the, into the, um, permission slip for the pictures, where did you get that? She told me that this, this permission form here, the Todd County School District Permission Form that everybody signs at the beginning of the year, gave Todd County the right to share this information with anybody. Now, that's kinda troubling to me, because as a parent, I would expect this to be for Todd County School District usage only. Not to allow some random reporter to come and share my ki- my kids' pictures across the world. Um, I guess that's another clarification for me is, if that is, if this is, if that is true, what she is saying, that this gave them permission, I think we need to really seriously redo this form and make parents aware that by signing this, you're allowing so anybody, you're allowing Todd County to give that information to anybody and share those pictures with anybody. You know, like, like these guys said, those are legitimate concerns. They're afraid for their children. Their children's pictures are now out there. Had it been done differently, had there been a policy and procedure or whatever to, to monitor this or, or, you know, just not let anybody come in, or let's say, we're letting this reporter come in, she's gonna do a re-story, it all could have been handled differently, I think. And, the, to me, the article, I couldn't, to me, it sounded, I mean, it was more of a superintendent review to me than it was about the grant. I didn't even get the grant part. I mean, I, that totally missed me. I got that our kids, you know, were reading very badly. They were poor. Some of them may never eat in a restaurant or ride a taxi. You know, those things stood up to me. I didn't know the po- the whole thing about this is the grant. And if it was about the grant, the, you know, we should have kept that lady focused on the grant instead of everything else. Um, and like I said, I was just kinda upset that, you know, my, my community, my kids, I, I call them my kids, because I still feel that strong tie to He Dog. I grew up there, I live with them kids in that community, and they're my relatives. And to have this picture painted of them like that, of me and of my, my kids, my community, it really makes me mad, you know? And it makes me mad that I couldn't get any really straight answers and that there's nothing we can do about it. When I feel the superintendent of schools should have been looking out for the best interest of our children before allowing this reporter to come in, or at least setting some rules, some standards. If she wasn't gonna let you proofread, you should have had that already before you let her come in and take these pictures and do this story. Because I trusted you to protect my children, uh, watch out for the best interest of them, and to, 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 um, keep them safe. And by this story, it seems like, to me, none of that was followed. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Stephanie. Floyd, you have more?
I do, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Um, thank you. Um, I'm curious about the school district's policy as to the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act of nineteen ninety. Um, the reason I'm asking about that is, is, uh, I did some research after kinda hearing about the asbestos. And I think most people might be shocked to learn that asbestos is a huge problem nationwide. It's not just here, it's not just our schools, it's pretty much any building built before nineteen eighty. Um, and my first, my next thought was, well, gosh, why don't we just get rid of it? Turns out, the EPA recommends that you don't mess with it unless you absolutely positively have to. And if you have to, then there are a whole litany of other things that you need to do first. So, I got some education myself when it comes to asbestos. Um, part of, part of that learning process is, um, according to that law, there needs to be basically a compliance plan and something in, kind of in place. I called the district office after learning all of this, and I inquired about the policy. And the policy, um, basically should name, um, basically, there are many different aspects to this policy. And there's about fifteen things that, that, that are kinda required. Um, just in case anyone's taking notes, um, the requirements are found at forty CFR, Part Seven sixty-three. Um, also, um, the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act, it's, it's, basically, the, the acronym is AERA. Um, and basically, it talks about the things that need to happen. For instance, the name and address of each school building, and whether the building has asbestos-containing building material, and the type of asbestos material. Date of the original school inspection, the plan for re-inspections, a blueprint that clearly identifies the location of these containing building materials, description of any response action or preventative measures taken to reduce exposure. I don't know that, that the school district's employees have had the suitable training. I don't know that it's documented anywhere. I was referred to Mr. Conoyer in the, in the, the bus area, and told he's the Director of Transportation and Maintenance. He basically sent me, and I give him credit, he, he gave me what he could. He basically gave me a paragraph that says what they do about the tiles at He Dog. There's nothing in here that tells me who had training and when. It doesn't tell me where it is in any of our other schools. It doesn't tell me when parents were sent notice, because notice is also required under the law. And I would encourage the board to talk to its attorney about this act. Um, because I don't think the kids, I don't think the kids' parents are being served if we're not following those regulations. Um, I kinda have to, I think we all kinda have to accept that asbestos is out there. But I think what, what we can't accept is, is basically the lack of, the lack of documentation that's required. Again, if this is required in every other school district in the country, there's no reason our kids deserve less. Um, I have some issues with the release, as everybody else does. And I would basically, um, instead of basically criticizing the release, I think we all kind of recognize that it needs to be reworded. Um, and I would encourage the board to, to undertake, basically, limiting the scope of this release. For instance, um, I wouldn't want anybody, under any circumstance, knowing my kid's date of birth. With so much identity theft out there and, and everything else, it's just, it's just too easy to lose sight of that. This gal at the paper might have jotted down birth, you know, and again, I'm just using an example. She could have written down the birthdate of any child and lost the note somewhere, and then somebody's gonna pick up the notes. I understand, you know, Todd County, we've, we've got our own, um, security measures. I'm sure they're kept in locked file cabinets as such as required. But there's no guarantee that this reporter follows the same standards. And I will tell you that I was at the meeting with the superintendent and the reporter online. And I will tell you that, um, we had all raised concerns about some things that were represented in the article. For instance, um, the thing that was troubling to me, especially as a non-Indian, is the statement that the junior high kids got the elementary curriculum, and the high school kids got the junior high curriculum. But when we talked about that, um, the superintendent pointed out that, you know what? We tested everybody in math, I'm, I'm speaking loosely, forgive me. Um, and, and, and it's easier to teach math to kids where they're at, rather than where we expect them to be. So if you got a room, fifty kids, for instance, and twenty of them test below grade level, you wanna at least get texts that'll, that'll address them at that lower grade level, so they'll improve. But just as likely, there were probably twenty kids who were above grade level. Give them an advanced one. But the article doesn't talk about that. This article, um, and basically, from, from a journalism critique, pretty much gave credence to every negative stereotype there is out there about Native Americans in general. Oh, eh, the lazy Indian, he can't work, he can't, can't, look at that, they're dumb, they're using elementary school. What does that tell employers in Sioux Falls, Mitchell, um, heck, Minot, North Dakota, about kids, applicants that they get? Is that my five minutes being up? I'm trying to talk faster, this isn't working. Um, what does that tell these employers who aren't from around here about our kids? What does it tell an employer in Omaha, Nebraska, who sees a kid who graduated from Todd County High School, or even Saint Francis Indian School? He reads this article, and he's gonna come to this conclusion about our kids and say, you know what? Yeah, you got a diploma, but what's it worth? I read this article that says this and this. I said that only one of fifty of you, um, are reading at grade level, or, or grade level in math. Problem is, 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 is we believe that the school district, I think with, with some, you know, some positive, hope for a positive outcome, um, the school district got just as duped as, as it seems everybody else. And the problem is, is where do we, where do we go from here? Um, one thing I learned in my research today for council is this article showed up in the Lexington, Kentucky Herald Leader, the Washington Times, the US News, and several other media outlets. Um, one of our concerns in the Attorney General's office here is, is the prospect of identity theft, child trafficking. Our kids are targets. So, back to this release. I would, I would suggest basically an extremely limited release. If you wanna release height, weight, and whatever, I recognize that's probably for athletic contests. L and I, you put it in the program, you know, this is our football team. You know, the guy's six-four and three-fifty. I mean, I, there, there might be an arguable use for that. But for these kids that were in their class to be videotaped and, and put up there, and, oh, by the way, these are the stupid kids who can't read at grade level, or who can't do math at grade level. That's what people are thinking. And this is why people are mad, this is why people are upset. Um, so I think, believe it or not, that's the end. And I appreciate the board's time, and I appreciate, um, any comments or questions that you have for me.
No, just that it's just so tragic, but it has hurt, hurt so many people. And it's so bad, that is how it can be. And it could have come out such a different way, and such a positive way for the kids. Because I don't even know if you saw this district data, I just pulled this data off about the kids. These are like a He Dog kids. And what has just happened this year at He Dog? With their progress on in math and, and reading, it's phenomenal. And that's what we should be celebrating, is that fact.
Can I ask, Dr. Whitney, when was that released?
I just pulled this data this morning.
Okay, so she didn't have access to it when she was writing this?
No, because we had to take the women benchmarks, and I just pulled it this morning. Last year, we were pulling it, I didn't have that then.
Okay, I just didn't think she did enough research to begin with, and this would have solid, I had to point.
And would show the things that are happening at He Dog in a very, very good way. Because even if, if math, um, from the fall to the winter, from last year to this year, we have, last year was twenty-four percent of the kids were making the growth that they should make in math. That was last year at this time. Well, this year, it's forty percent of the kids that are doing the growth that they should be doing. That's a huge, huge change, a huge celebration.
Can I have, can I ask a question? If you're gonna print something, wouldn't you go with these facts instead of going with what you had?
I didn't even have that.
Well, see, why didn't you, why did you let the article go through without knowing these in advance? I mean, instead of calling our kids poor and everything, you know? It's, um, it's really frustrating, because I have to co- two kids in college in Mitchell. And, um, they were shown the article from the Argus Leader. And, you know, they were made fun of. So, you know, this goes really, really far and wide. And, um, I just can't understand why this board let it go through, or...
I guess with the media sometimes is so unpredictable, and you're hoping, especially when they don't let you preview the story. So when parts come out, people know that they're not accurate.
You told me the other day that you, um, were allowed to proofread the story. I asked you on Thursday, when you called me about the conference call, you said, they should have let me take that out when I got to proofread it. And I said, well, on January twenty-sixth, when I called you at ten thirty-four in the morning, you told me, no, I wasn't able to proofread that story.
No, it was, I proofread it when it came out, and you saw it right online, and I looked at it. That proof, not before the whole story. And was going through it, and so I called right away, and said, this isn't quite right. This one isn't quite right. And she changed some of them, the other ones that I thought she needed to change, which were more of her impressions, her thoughts, what she thought. And I didn't think it was accurate, no, but I think she would change. Which, I called her four times.
I called her twelve times.
Okay, well, that's caused a lot of trouble. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, could I respond to some of the questions? Uh, I first would like to, and Chad, and the rest of the board here. The question about our facilities and buildings have been problems for years. And they actually belong to the BIA. And the tribe is very much aware of the process we've been trying for years, and trying for years to get the BIA to fulfill their obligations that we have. Todd County School District just leases, so we occupy the buildings. But they don't belong to us. And that's a lot of the things, and we haven't really had a lot of help making any kind of improvements and stuff, because the parties, and maybe Chad can add a little bit. But, uh, the Todd County School District is not the sole responsible person for all the buildings, all the conditions they've been in. They don't belong to us, and, uh, so...
Excuse me, but, um, the children belong to you. They're under your care. We, we blessed you with our children, but our children are going, you know, really, they're, they sit in the cold sometimes. And they can't focus on their work, because they're so cold, or they smell, you know, the sewage.
Did you, you, you heard that they belong to the BIA?
Mm-hmm, I called BIA.
So, uh, and we're just, you know, getting them to use. But we've been telling them, the buildings have been unsafe and stuff for years. But we haven't got the other parties to do their obligations, so, you know...
Do you think a grant could come from the BIA instead of another grant?
Oh, no, we've been going for this for, I don't know, what do I wanna say, fifteen years, maybe? Would that be wrong, Chad?
No, since about two thousand and four. And we've been actively working actually in DC. Um, you know, we've got copies of the, the various leases that we could provide, you know, I, I don't know.
So, I, I really just saying that Todd County School District is kinda not the sole responsible party for those buildings. And that part, um, that's the only part.
How about taking our kids out of that building? I mean, you know, what if something happens to our kids in the future? Asbestos could, you know, cause a lot of cancer. And, you know, we don't want our kids to go, uh, when they're forty, fifty years old and have cancer, and then go back and say, oh, they were in that building.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, I agree, I, I wish we could.
If it's BIA, then take our kids out of that building immediately.
Well, we do have information that was like that, but, uh, you know, I don't know if I need to, yeah.
I have a question. There's, um, yeah, these problems have been going on for years. And we have these out, outer, uh, classrooms that we've been using. And somehow, last year, we were all made to go back into that building that we, they took us out of and put us in other classrooms. And there's five classrooms over there that nobody uses. Where all those kids are in that main building. And I don't know what decision that made that, but everybody was put back in that building, considering all the things that were wrong with it. And those buildings on the outside are all empty, and they're still empty.
I'll, I'll be brief. Um, Mr. Lanz, I appreciate your comments. Um, the tribe is aware, um, of basically the, the situation as it relates to the leases and things like that. And I assure you, I've been told by the tribal attorney, Mr. Antoine, that, uh, council will basically be encouraged to ask the BIA official who comes down and delivers a port month late, basically, kind of about the status of, of these buildings. Because certainly, you know, the public attention, um, while it's caused a lot of hurt, we, we kinda understand that that's kinda how things are going. So, um, it's not that your concern's on deaf ears, it's not that we're totally laying this in front of Todd County School District. It's just you're the ones that happen to have custody of our kids during the day. Um, I would ask, um, the Oak Creek School that's, that's, that's gonna go up soon, is that through your corrobor- collaboration with the BIE? Or is that something the school district did separate?
Well, actually, we partnered very well with the tribe in the past. We've got four schools that are, uh, we currently lease.
Okay.
Oak Creek, Spring Creek, Rosebud, He Dog. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we were able to partner with Catholic Church and purchase a building out at Spring Creek
Okay.
in order to get our kids moved out of that facility.
Okay.
Uh, but we still maintain the lease with the Bureau.
Okay.
I think that's important to know. Oak Creek is the school that we're working on now. We're gonna go out to bid here in another month in order to put up there. But the tribe has actually gone through a, through resolution, allowed us to utilize the land there.
Okay.
Uh, and we're, we're in the process, and the plans have been written, you know, we're ready to go out to bid here very shortly for that school.
Okay.
He Dog has been put next on the, the, the school board's priority list.
And let me ask...
And that's where we're at.
Okay. If I may follow up, Madam Chair. Um, so, have you approached the tribal council at all? Perhaps somebody at TLE, um, to basically find you a plot of land that you can put a building on?
Currently, just recently, the tribe has approved through resolution, utilization of the land currently at He Dog. Uh, there's been also talks about other potential plots of land. And the school board, just recently, have, we've actually gone out and toured a couple of those.
Okay.
Um, so we're looking for the land, but before the surveying, like you had mentioned, and before any of that's big... But before the surveying, like you had mentioned, and before any of that big steps can be taken, we've got to figure out where that piece of land's gonna be.
Okay.
But to the tribe's credit, there has been tribal resolution allowing usage of the current land that the HEDOG facilities sit on now.
Okay, so if it were the same land, I'm sorry, I'm totally, I... If it were the same land, is this basically a scrape and rebuild? I mean, it would almost have to be, wouldn't it?
It would be a complete rebuild.
To the mo, right. Because, you know, the guy at the BIA, when I talked to him, Mr. LaBelle, said basically his concern is the foundation in general.
Sure.
90-year-old building, that's kind of a fair statement. Thanks, I appreciate your patience and letting me ask questions.
I just wanted to follow up on the question about the land. And like Chad said, in 2004, we started working with Todd County with those four buildings. The tribe, of course, did not take those because the BIA wanted to give them to us. Well, then they could get rid of them and it would be our problem. So we did not take those buildings. And so, um, the last that I heard Chad just explained, that HEDOG or Oak Creek would be the first one to be rebuilt and then HEDOG. And, um, we were looking, I was looking for different land and I didn't get back to Dr. Whitney because we didn't find a spot by the Head Start in HEDOG, right next to the, where the Head Start building, there was a section there that would make sense for the kids, would be, um, right next to the Head Start. It would be in Carmory where the kids would be able to better access the school. Because the majority of our kids or, the majority of our tribal students come from Carmory. HEDOG has a few scattered places here and there, but the majority of those kids come from Carmory. And I have those, those maps that I got from Chad that I was gonna drop off to Chad. I wasn't sure what was going on. And yes, we did get the, the tribe did approve that same section of land, but we still want to explore that. And Mr. Smith said that was gonna be talked about, but I don't see him here tonight. And that's one of, another reason that I came was to talk about that. But the reason the tribe has not taken that land for all of you is because we're not gonna take a problem. And we were, I talked to Leanne on Friday or Thursday. And she said that for years and years, she has told Todd County that they need to just stop the Bobby's building. That you need to get those kids somewhere else. And we were, there was an agreement finally made back in July, so Dr. Whitney was there. A couple of people from my office were there, um, Scott Harmon was there. That the agreement was made that, that HEDOG could stay in that, in those buildings until maybe 30 days after the last day of school. But I never got to see the report that he got. And it's far worse than he thought it was with those conditions. And then I found out in my research last Friday, I didn't have very much time, Thursday and Friday, is that, um, we were told by several people, and I just heard it tonight, was that they were out of the building in different, in different classrooms, not in that building. Now they were put back in that building. And I'm hearing tonight there was sewage in that building. So it's alarming to us that those kids need to be taken out of that building as soon as possible. I don't know what, if the board's gonna have to sort of that out. And all along, when we were working with Superintendent Bordel, Richard Bordel, we had tried and tried to get money, right? Chad, you referenced meetings where all the BIA people came from Alford in DC, researched everything, and they said, "No, no, 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 we're on a list of, a big long list of the BIA." Probably, I don't know.
And we were actually funded, I mean, I hate to interrupt Cindy, but Cindy's been a part of the process for as long as I've been there.
Yeah, we're trying, we were trying to get the, yeah, we're trying to get the, yeah.
Three out of the four schools were actually hit a national list for priorities in order to get funded. Oak Creek Elementary was actually funded, I've got plans right now from the Bureau, that their architects came in and designed a school. It says it's funded, but no one can tell me where the money went. And we've been fighting that battle since 2004.
Imagine that.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
We never, it was allocated, but never...
So, I mean, the process, it's been a very frustrating process. But, but once again, to the tribe's credit, we have worked hand in hand in DC trying to get movement on this and have not had an opportunity to get that done. That's why we're going out ourselves and trying to come up and partner with the tribe in order to figure out the locations that we can do this in in our communities, in order to build new. And remove ourselves from, you know, in 2004, it was a 25-year lease that was signed with the Bureau. You know, that's what we're in right now. We're paying for those very nominal amounts, but we're paying every year in order to utilize the facilities the way they are.
But the BIA does not want, they want...
Well, and within those leases, I'm gonna be very blunt. The Bureau is supposed to take care of major improvements.
Okay, well, they're refusing. They're refusing. And another thing I wanted to say was that the present location of HEDOG's school is in a question. And that's one of the reasons that we were concerned until we thought, we kind of brainstormed and thought, "Well, maybe if we could find a different location, particularly with school students, that might be good enough. That would get them out, get them out of this whole situation." But one of the concerns was, okay, we're gonna need a gym. Maybe you can solicit money from donations from different movie stars or whatnot that got involved with the, the tight line to get us a gym on some kind of economy. Because the tribe doesn't have that kind of money to do that. But that was another issue that would need to be talked about. But as far as the BIA, when we were talking about that, Laber, there's no way they're gonna do anything. There's no grant because we've already tried everything in HEDOG there. The tribe has already looked and worked with Chad and the BIA to see if they would do something. They will not do nothing.
That's why I wanted to bring it out so that people are familiar with what we're working.
So what we have to do is we have to take those kids out of there and put them in a safer place. Because it's not Todd County's responsibility to do that. We'll help however we can. We don't have the funds to do that, but we need to come up with a remedy. The building, and then the article kind of brought up the issue with the building as well. But I, one last thing I'm gonna say is that that article was not focused on that grant. I know what that grant's about very well because I was in the very beginning and construct of that grant. And I think it would've been a best, I think it would've been a best practice or it would've been more helpful for Dr. Whitney if you had involved Vicki and Sage and being in those interviews.
And he's, the funny thing of it is, the reporter spent the most time with them. So, or they come out the different way. They only talked to me and did a video thing in my office for 15 minutes. They spent the whole day with those people at each of the different schools. So how it didn't come back with more of that...
Well, we have to mix it up. I just, we didn't get that, they never even...
And they were there the most. That's where they spent the most of their time.
The reporter did do very fifty seconds of that on.
I guess I just have two, my questions is, now that we brought our concerns to the board, where do we go from here? What kind of, what, what can we do? Where do we go?
I think has taken notes about what the different people have expressed as concerns. And so have I. And we will take all of this under advisement. Probably have to do a work session one night and see what we can come up with.
Okay, the reason I was asking is because a lot of, I mean, not me, but a lot of other people feel like, you know, somebody has to take responsibility or accountability for allowing this person to come in. And, you know, like, like you guys said, it's already written, it's already out there. But there were, there should've been steps to prevent it from happening in the first place. And, um, I just, I just feel like somewhere along the line, um, the focus was taken away from the purpose.
I'll probably be transferred tomorrow. But HEDOG's school is near and dear to me. That's, they're my, where my relatives live. And my personal feeling is this school district screams accountability. Somebody is accountable for that article that went out. We all get in trouble because they all, accountability, you're accountable for what we know. And we employees that are here, this is kind of stuck down our throat. So I'm kind of throwing a back at the board and Dr. Whitney is, who's accountable? But, but that's all, HEDOG's near and dear to me. I know every joke Charlie Bush did in that.
One last comment?
Just basically that I would be willing to draft a permission form and share it with the parents and let the parents bring it back to you. Something that they would deem somewhat acceptable. Just to throw it out there, maybe you can have your lawyer look at it and maybe see if it meets the school's needs as well. But I would be willing to assist the parents in that endeavor and drafting something that we think might be more appropriate. And that's, that's all I'm throwing out there.
Okay. Uh, one more?
One more. I am Viola Vaughn from the HEDOG community. I was personally very offended that an outside journalist was commissioned to do this story. Since I've been writing for nearly 20 years now, I'm from the HEDOG community. And I looked at the report that Mr. Lloyd talked about and I was appalled. I think every person in that building is at risk. I think, I would ask that the school board remove the superintendent for putting our children at such a risk by leaving them in that building. You're bouncing it back between the district and the BIA. But ultimately, it's your choice to put those students in that building. You've got those modulars, you've got other modulars you can get. It goes back to leadership and somebody needs to pay for this. These children are all at risk. So I'm asking the board to remove Dr. Whitney right away as superintendent. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, again, I want to thank those of you who expressed concerns and things. And we will take it all under advisement. And somehow we'll get back to you and do what we can do. And thank you again. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Or, moved by Linda?
A second. There's a question, when we get to the consent agenda, are we able to pull things out?
Supported by Melissa. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, on a brighter note, here we have several successes to celebrate in our district. Our January's Students of the Month at High School for freshman class, Precious Whitebough; sophomore class, Pink Horse Looking; junior class, Kiss Porter Student Class; and senior class, beyond the red lights. Also, we had, uh, Dr. Whitney sent a message from, um, the Flatbys Game. And I just wanted to lend it to you because many of you didn't get an agenda. Uh, this lady said, "I just wanted to shout to someone in the Todd County School that thinks to say what a fantastic job your cheerleaders did at the Flatbys Game on Tuesday evening night. I didn't get a chance to compliment them myself before we left the gym, but I loved their spirit and their sportsmanship. They were energetic and supportive even to our team and our halftime performers. I heard many comments about how impressed people were with the cheer team and wanted to pass my regards on to someone who may be able to let them know that they did a fantastic job. Their hard work doesn't go unnoticed even in another town. Best of luck to both him and the basketball team as the season progresses." And it was written by Kathy Delton, oh, Katie Delton, I'm sorry. We also have walking wellness initiative. Um, Tom Drew and Roxanne Linday are working with staff outside of school, out of school hours on a walking program. In January, 145 hours and 51 minutes of walking was logged. The top two walkers for January were Rebecca Ron and Laura Pearson. They both received a flavor in loser water bottle. The challenge continues. We had 15 certified staff who, um, we have it. 15 certified staff who had perfect attendance for the first semester.
Were we able to...
Yes. Okay, for Klein School, Teresa Willoughby. At Rosebud School, Deb Birch, Carmen Blackwell, and Paul Wertham. At TCES, Darcy Arnold, Nick Larson, Heidi Olson, Shawna LeShawn, and Patty Tinnan. At the middle school, Amy Angle, Steve Hyner, and Joseph Oliver. At the high school, Amy Klein, Bobby Winstone, and Chris Sano. They all have perfect attendance for the whole first semester. This is school board mission week as well.
Next week.
Oh, next week.
Celebrated the 23rd. Celebrated next week.
Hmm, I'll celebrate this week. Okay, next on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
First, we're gonna start off with Carol Galbraith is going to give us a little update for exceptional education.
Excuse, excuse me for what name and, and I just changed. But I just want to thank you for, I've become a, uh, parent, uh, grandparent, uh, thank you, HEDOG. To name that at the beginning of what, that action we should take. Um, Mr. Lanz, maybe you didn't notice, but when they were talking to you then, I seen a gesture on your face. You didn't notice, but I seen it and I, I wanna point that out because sometimes we don't notice. And when I, I'm on boards, you have to, you have to really watch our, our facial expressions. And I, I just wanted to point that out. You didn't notice it, because you didn't notice it. And I just wanted to, you called us out, not only us that sit out here and we could, we could watch ourselves. So we're going to board. That's called for me also sitting on board, sitting on council. I hope to watch myself because sometimes we don't notice and sometimes we don't notice. And I just wanted to call that out. I, I'm not...
I, I do wanna kind of respond back to you. I did, yeah, I, when the gentleman was talking, it was, I, I do not speak all the language and everything. And as he was talking, he might've been talking about stuff that maybe I could support and...
Ask to inhibit their major life activities. So it's a little different process, but it's all protected under ADA.
I may come visit you.
Okay, yeah, it's kind of, you know, intertwined and, and you really, if you follow the forms, it really helps you understand those. So we've tried to make them so they're consumer friendly. So you could sit in on a meeting and understand, you know, why, why a person would be eligible and why they're not. Because any adult in this room, if you have a disability, could be on a five or four. It's not just for school age kids, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, high school, George and Mike and Brian.
And Sunny. So Sunny will do the voice down too. So we're gonna, we're gonna use Doormaid to help you go along. And so Mike will go along. And I'm gonna suggest that if you have any questions, that you stop us at that point to ask, okay? So we keep moving. First of all, I want you to identify this picture. This was done by hand. Those are all dots and that's all by pencil. And that's by Sean Shepherd. Now, he won first in show for art at LNI and that's two years in a row he's done that. This is now the cover for LNI, for their brochures from here on out, okay? Yeah, you started it. Okay, next one. So we're gonna run you through some information. You know, one of the things said about Todd County High School, it wasn't friendly, kids don't wanna be there. There was a lot of that type of discussion. So, as you can see, over the last two years before Mike and I started working together as a team, this was our enrollment. Mike and I have been together for a little bit over a year now. And everyone at the school, Sunny has been there, uh, this is her first year. We're up to four hundred and sixty-seven students. So our enrollment has jumped significantly. And we're well on the way to having over five hundred students. Alright, so we are gonna project that next year, we will be at four hundred and eighty-seven students. Reason being is because we are emphasizing retention of freshmen and sophomores. And you'll see that as we move along. Next one, so. Our attendance rate is also when, you know, attendance drives everything. So when we're talking about not being a priority high school, then we're really projecting the next two to three years, we will not be a priority high school. We will be off of priority. That attendance drives everything. So previous year, we have seventy-eight percent attendance. This year, and again, all of those numbers are at the end of the first semester. These are the end of the first semester numbers. We're at eighty-one percent. So not only is our overall enrollment up, but our attendance is up also. And that gives you an impact that when you look at an increased attendance and increased enrollment, you look at your average daily attendance. Last year, on average, we had three hundred students a day in the building. This year, we have three hundred and seventy-eight students a day in the building. Now, that's a twenty-five percent jump, the amount of students that are walking around the building. So I would say that belief that Todd County High School isn't a friendly place, or isn't a place the students want, don't wanna be, is absolutely not true anymore.
Question, what's the bottom school year there?
Oh, messed that up, man, that's twenty-seven eighteen. That's this year. Good catch, alright. Now, this is gonna help you to see why we're doing it. Orange bar are our seniors as of right now. These are our seniors. So you can see, they came in with a hundred and twenty, and here was the normal pattern that we experienced. They were overscheduled, a lot of under-engaged, and a lot of other issues. They dropped, they dropped again. So by the time our senior classes were getting, our freshmen were getting to their juniors, we were looking at sixty kids or so. And then that's why you will see graduation groups of about fifty, fifty-five. The largest graduating class in Todd County history is eighty-six. That was nineteen sixty-nine. Every class comes in with more than eighty-six students. So the real issue isn't students not coming to Todd County, it's us retaining them. So let's look at what we're doing. So our current junior class. Our current junior class started out with a hundred and twenty, we retained over ninety percent of them. Come in at this number now, we've retained almost a hundred percent of them. So we have a hundred and four juniors going into next year. Which means next year, we will have over a hundred seniors, which will be the first time that I think anyone can remember. We are on track to graduate the largest class in Todd County history. Last year, we graduated the fourth largest class in Todd County history. These juniors will be the largest class in Todd County history. But that's only gonna last a year. Because coming right behind them are our sophomores, which our retention rate is even better. And when we retain more of them, they will be the largest class in Todd County history. So. Okay, so. So.
I have a question going back to that.
Sure, let's go back, go back.
Going back to that, to these numbers and the largest class that's set to graduate. Because we sat in here and we hear about the new math curriculum. Are they going to be at their math level grades when they walk off that stage?
I would tell you this, as of right now, I am fully confident that our four-year cohort rate will be over eighty percent. And they will be the highest scoring class in Todd County history. We are highly confident that our SPI, our School Performance Index, is gonna jump just because of their math and English performance. Yours, um, SPI is based on the Smart About score of your juniors and juniors only. That class is our current juniors. We expect them to outscore Todd County in the last ten years. So yes, they will be on track. We have bought new curriculum, but yeah, let's keep this in mind with the new curriculum. The middle school is doing such a good job, we have three eighth graders that are in geometry as of right now. We have a host of juniors that are in algebra two. That wasn't happening before. We have a host of juniors that are in calculus, pre-calc, AP Calc. College, college algebra, college English. They're taking college English. We have a record number of eleventh graders that are in college English. As a matter of fact, one of the proposals for the future is because of the freshmen, and we're gonna go back Mike real quick, because of these two classes, these two classes, the juniors and the sophomores, we are going to need to increase and expand our math, science, and English department. AP Biology, AP Chemistry, we're gonna need to expand math, and we're gonna need to put in Literature one and two. We are gonna need to put in higher level classes because of their academic prowess. So yes, to answer your question, I guess the short answer would be yes.
I'll interject too. And we also have to remember this, um, students at the high school graduate with three years of math. That three years of math might include anything higher than Algebra II. So it might be, uh, pre-algebra, geometry, and algebra. So that can differentiate some different students.
But for most of our students, we graduate with four years of math. They'll be recent scholars. So, okay, so moving right on. Our School Performance Index, just to let you know, not only are we, we very confident that that's going to increase, but it already has increased. That's up ten percent. Uh, and again, that measures growth in achievement. And we do, again, because it's our juniors taking the test this year, we project a significant increase. And, um, just to let you know, our SPI score went up this year to the point that we jumped over two or three other high schools. In order to get off priority, we need to be out of the bottom five percent. Which means, we need to jump over other schools. It isn't just a matter of increasing your scores. It's a matter of increasing your scores to the rate that you jump over other schools. Okay? And I feel very confident that we're gonna do that. Next one, Mike. College, and here's one of the reasons why, because we're getting smarter. We are actually getting smarter at the high school. Our college and career readiness, not only did it increase twenty percent, but I pass this out to you. And if you go to page five later on when you're sitting around, you just wanna do some reading, it tells you how college readiness, SPI, how everything is calculated. The college readiness, you have three chances. Accuplacer, ACT score, smart balance exam, and another three. Currently, we're up twenty percent. What we've discovered, and we have a meeting tomorrow with the state, other high schools around the state have gotten together with colleges in the state, and they've created a program called My Foundation Lab, which is a Pearson software. So that, and they have been placing their seniors who aren't college and career ready, which means that if they went to college, they would have to take remedial math or remedial English. They have been placing those guys in this program, which is a software, online program. And then once they complete it, they give them the Accuplacer. But we haven't been doing that. Matter of fact, we weren't aware of it. So again, we're getting smarter, that's our fault. When you really talk about taking care of kids and doing your job, you know, I wanna apologize to you right now, we weren't doing a good job. Okay, that's our fault. So now that we're aware of it, we will put this software in line in our edutainment classes. We already have two teachers that are teaching credit recovery online that have empty room in their class so that they can actually piggyback, and we can run both programs in the same classroom. Students work independently. So what program they're working on doesn't make a difference. So we already have a framework to put this in place. So we predict that that's gonna make that performance go up, once we start implementing that. So, and just to let you know, 'cause you're asking about the juniors. As of right now, one-third of our juniors are within three points of an ACT score that would make them college ready. As of the beginning of junior year, they took this ATC, ACT exam, the beginning of junior year. So one-third of them, which is higher than the country, they're already ready.
Yes, but I can interject, in the, in the past few years, we've had, uh, one to five students who were testing at college ready according to the ACT. And we're already at thirty-six that are within three points of that.
Yeah, so. These guys, they're coming along, next one, Mike. Alright, oh, our four-year cohort increased eighty percent. Now, again, and, and she here is gonna tell you how to calculate that. But the four-year cohort means, how many students are graduating in four years? Okay? Just to let you know, native, for Native Americans, it's fifty percent for the state of South Dakota. We are currently at fifty-seven percent. All the majority schools in the state are at eighty-three percent. We're gonna be at over eighty percent next year. We're gonna hum along at eighty percent plus for the next few years. So, yeah, we're, we're very proud of what the kids are capable of doing. We're very proud that they're coming to school on a regular basis and that they have the fortitude and strength to plug this away in four years. But now, same token, we got some kids that take a little bit more time, and they're coming in too. And that's one of the reasons that you saw that senior class number jump up. Because of the kids who decided, I'm gonna go back. That takes a lot of courage to do that. And they've come back. They've come back with all the life issues that they've had to deal with, and they're succeeding. We have one student that did not graduate, one student that was in the building. Now, you know, the way they measure these graduations, this is a little different. She was in the building, but she didn't graduate. So seventy-seven out of seventy-eight eligible students last year graduated. Well, she graduated, she's done, she ended up at the end of semester. So when you put her, when she goes across the stage in May, that's seventy-eight to seventy-eight for last year. So we're seeing those students come back. Alright, Mike? Alright, now, Sunny works for our college-bound students and counseling, so she's gonna tell you about some college admissions.
Hello, my name is Sunny Clifford, I'm a counselor over here, this is my first year. Um, I've been working with mostly juniors and seniors accessing post-secondary education, how to apply to college, um, how to apply for financial aid and helping them in any process that they need. So the FAFSA submissions, we've had seventeen completed applications for six at this time last year. That is four times more than Crazy Horse School, Marty Indian School, McLaughlin High School, St. Francis Indian School, three and a half times more than White River High School, three times more than Little One High School, and two and a half times more than Red Club High School. And still applying.
Fair, fair way for me.
Uh, February, family engagement night.
Yeah, you're gonna do the FAFSA.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll be helping with the FAFSA and college applications on family engagement night. So they have some more opportunities there, hopefully we can get that out to the schools, to the parents, send them a text or phone call, that will be there.
Is your family engagement night open top, it's on freshman group?
Right, so it's gonna have certain activities, it's gonna have bingo, basketball will be a part of it, and, yeah.
And it says twenty-first year package, you're bored. We have to move to twenty. Reason being of, they have a basketball game on a Tuesday and a basketball game on Thursday, that's really, you know, very fun.
We have early college acceptances, this was before December. So University of Nebraska Omaha, Minnesota Morris, Northern Colorado, Colorado State University, University of Colorado, University of Arizona, Arizona State University, Mitchell Tech, Black Hill State, South Dakota State, Dakota State, University of South Dakota. And, um, one of our students who graduated early went on to Job Corps. We have, we've been working with the US Military Branches, the Army, the Navy, the Marines, the Air Force, and the National Guard. Um, and we will be doing, we have a tutor to work with, uh, curriculum with ASVAB for any students who want to increase their ASVAB score Monday and Wednesday afternoon after school.
I have a question. How many students were accepted last year to reach for college?
Thirty-five.
How many don't after we went?
Not thirty-five.
I'm gonna say, I believe I'll know.
Have you guys tracked any of that information?
We have tracked some of the students who came back, uh, over the first year, but we can do a better job.
Also, Ms. Linda, to jump on your question, um, those students that went to colleges, um, and they came back and talked to our students about, even if you get a four A ACT score, it's okay because they also look at different things. Um, George and I sat in a meeting with Stanford and Harvard recruiters to see what we needed to do with our students to get them to those interviews, which we had, three kids have those interviews already. And they said, just make sure they know how to sell themselves. We don't care what they're doing on grades, we can see that already what they've submitted. Um, so we've been working with those people as well. But I know from friends of my kids going off to college, there's a lot of them back.
No?
Yeah, but it's not because of the academics, socially and like.
So, and you know, and that leads to a really great point. You know, we're not talking about Harvard and Dartmouth and, and, and Stanford or Notre Dame schools because we're saying, you need to go to an Ivy League school. All of those schools are what are called full-pay schools. Which means they pay for everything, including transportation. We want our kids, we are targeting our kids not to go to Black Hill State. We're not saying, don't go. But if a child has a choice between going to Black Hill State or Minnesota Morris, and Minnesota Morris is gonna give you a tuition waiver, and your Pell Grant is gonna pay for room and board, it's gonna be better for you to go there than to go to Black Hill State and have to borrow ten thousand or more every year. And that's been the problem. Students have been going to schools, not to the South Dakota State, South Dakota schools aren't good. They just don't have large endowments. They don't have a lot of money to give you to become part of their academy. So we've had students go to schools that just weren't the best or cost both, or cost effective option. And so we're doing a better job of doing that now, and I think we're gonna see some of the money part not come back, not to bite our students as much.
I should add, at the beginning of the first semester, we brought in admissions from Yale, Brown, and Columbia to talk to tenth graders about how to get into their schools. And a lot of it was, you know, be well-rounded. And then like George said, they have full pay, which means they will pay for everything, as long as you get in, stay there, go four years.
I have a question, I'm a local studies instructor for a local college. What have you been doing for local colleges?
We work with Sintae.
Because it seems to me like we would be, uh, it, from what I've seen, students do a lot better starting out at a local tribal college in their community for the first year, two years, than a more successful one if they want to transfer to a lot.
And that's, you know, and that's, so, and that goes back to, you know, Mr. Adams is gonna talk about relationships. Oh, yeah.
Please don't assume that I don't talk to my students about tribal colleges because of the tribal college graduate. And I fully believe in the support that our community gives our students, and that them gives our students. I mean, it's a good head start. I actually encourage, take some summer classes there, you can transfer anywhere.
But, okay, we wanna make sure that we match the best kids with the best students there. So students, you know, who are really close, who say they haven't been engaged much, or haven't been to the point that they went off to a lot of camps over their career, we wanna make sure they go there. So we did have Sintae, uh, that was just in the building, one was Sintae just over, about three weeks ago. When they came in, the management's department came over, so yeah, we do wanna make sure we build the leadership to fulfill and, and that we have the right students go there.
BLT, thank you.
Uh, my name is Brian Adams, I've been teaching, uh, science at the high school, uh, this is my fifth year here. Um, and I've been a part of BLT for two years, which stands for Building Leadership Team. Um, what it is, is it's the administration and teachers getting together to talk about issues at the school and how can we, how can we address this stuff? Um, and we're really focusing on that SPI. Now that we know why we're a priority school, how we're being scored, we, we can really focus on trying to raise that. So for BLT, we're focusing on three things. We're gonna focus on relationships, we're gonna focus on attendance, and we're gonna focus on engagement with students. Okay? For relationships, we know that, um, many times, successful people from all walks of life can point to at least one positive adult role model in their life. Some teacher, some coach, some counselor that believed in that when nobody else was and had already been counted out. Right, we know that. We know some of our students have already been counted out. And we know we need to be that positive role model for our kids. Um, when we, at our family nights, um, Jeannie has taken some informal polls. Um, when students are asked to write about what they enjoy about the school, one factor that comes up again and again is about the teachers. A lot of the students like the teachers, they say we're friendly, they say we're helpful. A lot of them are seeing us as those positive role models, there's those mentors for them. Um, we just wanna keep that energy going, alright? We don't need to reinvent the wheel here. One thing we are doing is we're reaching out to our staff and we're telling them, make contacts with ten kids. Alright, we know our teachers are seeing sixty, seventy, eighty kids a day. They're not gonna build a strong relationship with all of those. But if you can build a relationship with at least ten of them, I mean, that doesn't mean like ten, okay, I'm done. But if you can strike, connect with at least ten of them, and we've got over thirty certified staff alone, not including Perez, we're gonna reach most of those kids that are in that building every day, right? Some kids are harder to reach than others, but that's why we're asking everybody to kinda step up. Go about a little bit more, because like Shifty says, not only do we have to grow, we have to grow more than every other school if we wanna climb up. Um, we know that attendance is a huge factor. Um, at the end of last semester, I asked Brian to run some numbers for me. Uh, we had seventy-nine students that had twenty or more unexcused absences. Um, I don't wanna mean unexcused periods, I mean, these are full days where they missed all eight periods throughout the day. Um, seventy-nine had over twenty, uh, and twenty-seven of them had over thirty. And again, these are unexcused absences, not excused absences, so athletic events, funerals, that kinda stuff is not counted in this. Um, and I know we're talking about how our attendance is, is going up, which is good. Um, but the state goal is less than ten per year. Alright, if this seventy-nine, if they were all freshmen, they continue this for next semester, at the end of their freshman year, they've missed all of them that they were supposed to miss for their entire high school career. Um, so we know that although it is getting better, it is still a big concern. We know that students that miss two or more days a month are less likely to graduate. Uh, in a study in Rhode Island, they looked at kids who had chronic absenteeism, and I can't remember how they defined chronic absenteeism, it might have been, um, more than ten, um, semester, maybe it was twentieth semester. Uh, but only eleven of those, uh, students that had chronic absenteeism matriculated, which means re-enrolled after one year of college. And that's what we seek. If we look at our matriculation rate, it's probably pretty close to that. Um, now, they also then compared it to the students who did not have this chronic absenteeism in high school, and fifty-one percent of them re-enrolled for a second year. Alright, students have to be in the building, they have to be in their seats. It doesn't, if they're not there, they can't learn, if they're not there, we can't build a relationship with them. So one thing we are looking at, um, for our next school year is, we've started the process this year, is we've started taking input from teachers. We wanna know what their thoughts are, how we can try and do this. Now, I know there are things outside of our control, but what can we as Todd County do to try and help our attendance? Um, so we're looking at some stuff, we're gonna do some research on policies, we'll probably be coming, uh, to some board meetings to try and enact some new policies to try and fight those numbers. Now, the third part here is engagement, and we're kinda looking at this in two different ways. First is engagement in the classroom. Are your classes and lessons engaging? Are they relevant to students? We know if it's relevant to students, they're gonna wanna be here, that's gonna help us with our attendance. I think that's why we're getting that uptick right now, but we wanna push it a little further. Because if we wanna get off priority, we have to do a little bit more than everybody else. Okay, so, um, if they're in the, if they're engaged, they're gonna wanna be there, it's gonna give us a chance to build relationships. Um, we provided professional development, uh, we did a book study on Teach Like a Pirate, and, um, help get our lessons more engaging, and also on how to incorporate choice in the classroom. Small choice, big choice, 'cause that little bit of choice gives kids autonomy, which then is going to help them be engaged. Now, in the classroom is great, but we wanna look at the whole students, we wanna look at what can we do outside of the classroom? What else can we do to get kids to wanna be in school? So, um, we're getting more and more clubs available, which we're gonna talk about in just a second. Um, but if we notice our school spirit and our participation, our enrollment in extracurricular activities, um, has improved and is continuing to improve. I mean, you go to basketball games now, when I first came here, there was no such thing as a student section, right, five years ago. There would be kids there, they'd be running around, they would be sitting wherever. Now the kids are sitting together, they're cheering, boys, girls, volleyball, doesn't matter. The kids are, the kids want to be at the games. Um, you see them wearing Falcons gear, that school spirit, um, is, is coming along really nicely. So some of the clubs that we're offering now, we have archery club, chess clubs, chongdu club, K-pop club, anime club, culinary club, National Honor Society, HOSA, drama, art, weightlifting. We started a Minecraft club this week. Um, we're in the process of trying to raise money for our ping pong tables, we can have a ping pong, uh, club after school. We're trying, what's happening now is with all of these clubs, now we have more teachers that wanna have these little passion projects, right? We've got paraprofessionals who wanna share what they care about with the students, which is getting that engagement, which is getting those kids to be there, which is building relationships, which is gonna improve our attendance. So all three of these are related, and all three of these together, we think, uh, will do a lot to help with our retention, to help with those test scores, 'cause they're there and they're learning. And, um, we're gonna see that SPI score, uh, continue to increase.
Alright, so, the next we're gonna talk about this. Now, so in my, my six years at Todd County, I worked with Ms. Linda probably about five of them. And in working with her, one of the things I learned from her, that she is constantly, as always said, is that the school should not be focused strictly on punishing kids. That it should be more about them growing and learning, and we shouldn't have that atmosphere of punishing. So that's exactly what we're trying to do at the high school, is take punishment off to the table. I don't, and that, you know, I don't know, I'm a parent, and I imagine that most of you guys are parents. I don't know when was the last time you punished a teenager into doing things different. Does, I don't think it really works all that good, right? So what we're trying to do is, we know the students are gonna make mistakes. And our, our basic model is to be like a bowling alley where they put the rails up. And so we just want you to stay in the lane. We know you're gonna bump into the rails, we just don't want you to fall off the gutter. And if you keep moving down that lane for four years, you'll hit those pins at the end. But what you do have to be is accountable, and you do have to learn from your mistakes, and you do have to say you're sorry. So when students come in and they've done something wrong, and we can have an honest conversation, and they can admit to what they did, they can be held accountable, apologize to the person affected by it, and then take their consequence. When they come back to school, hey, it's like nothing ever happened, we're still on track. We're still in that lane, guys, you know, and we're still rolling toward the pins. So, with that method, our fighting, now again, this is as of January. Okay, this is as of, uh, the end of the semester, first semester. Our fightings were down, our fights were down. I think we had a total of, uh, eight or nine fights the first semester. So fighting was down. So fighting was down. And, and a lot of it is, you know, I wanna give credit to, to the teachers, to Brett Whitehat, our Dean of Students, to Mike, uh, the, the people, because kids were actually coming in, talking about their feelings. To our counselors, they were talking about their feelings and identifying anger, and, you know, telling us about the drama, right? Be, and being, we were able to solve these issues, de-escalate before a fight happened. So that was very important. So fighting is down. Next, insubordination. Uh, one of the reasons this is down is because, you know, we're just realizing we already have mechanisms in place. So when you get a teenager, they won't take their hat off, or, you know, those small minor things. You know, the, when you made that a confrontation, now it escalated, yeah. Then the profanity started flying, especially if you did it in front of other people, right? So basically, you know, we know we cleared ours, they're gonna be here tomorrow. The way Brett and, and the guys are security guards, the way they handle things, you know, you know, you, you, kid maybe didn't comply. Okay, they, they go in the class and, you know, you write the ODR, and we make an ISS list, and the next day, because they're coming to school, attendance is up. So when, when they come back to school the next day, hey, by the way, uh, you go to ISS today. Look for, uh, for yesterday, come on. You know, and everybody's calm. But that moment, we didn't have an escalation. So those insubordinations are going now. You know, and one of the other things we, we don't do, uh, kids go in class, they're in class ninety-nine percent of the time. They're where they're supposed to be. So, being in the hallway has not been turned into hide and seek like the old days. You know what the old days were like, right? Someone calls down, hey, I just saw a kid walk down the hallway, oh, get security up there. And then security goes running upstairs, the kid sees them, and now it becomes Keystone Cops, as they're running around the building. You know, they turn it into a game. Well, we don't do that anymore, right? You write the ODR, next time that student comes to school, which is the next day, oh, by the way, you're on ISS list. And everybody complies. So insubordination is down. Now, skipping, again, skipping is up, but keep this in mind. We have twenty-five percent more students in the building now, and we're doing a better job of reporting that. A lot of things are being coded correctly. I think there were some errors with coding before too, you know? So, and since those other problems are done, we've removed those rocks out of, out of the, you know, drained the swamp. And, and now that you can see those rocks, we can see that this rock more clearly. Even though the skipping numbers are, let me just give you an example. This is a hundred and ninety skips, ODRs for skipping in the first semester. Well, that's a hundred and ninety periods the kids didn't go to school in class, right? The students had two hundred and eight thousand periods, eligible periods. So if you take all the students in the building, there were two hundred and eight thousand periods that they could have been in class, and they only skipped a hundred and ninety-two of it, right? That's less than one percent. So even if you say, well, teachers don't write all those ODRs, well, let's turn that into six hundred then, let's triple it, let's make it six hundred. That'd still be less than two percent. So these kids are where they're supposed to be ninety-nine percent of the time. I think that's pretty good for a teenager. I don't think I was that reliable when I was a teenager, you know? If ninety-nine percent of the time, your teenagers are where they're supposed to be, then I think we'd all take that, right? Okay, okay. As long as we're gonna be. Now, drug usage is up. Actually, drug busts are up. Give you a great example. Student bought some weed at school today, went to the other student, hey, I want you to keep this for me. Blah, 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 blah. The other student didn't say no, but they didn't wanna do it. And so you know what happens in the past. You know what happened in the past, they just went in, kept it. I'll keep this secret, I'm not gonna be a snitch, I'm gonna be a rap, whatever, you know how teenagers talk. Well, guess what happened this time? The student who had it, took it, looked at it, went straight to security, hey, man, this game is, I don't feel comfortable with it. Oh, okay, so, report it. Okay, we're doing a better job. And also, you know, there's that control factor. You know, we've had, uh, we've been almost fully staffed. One of the big advantages that we've had this year is full staffing. By having all of our night custodians, by having, and you know, Vicky, that makes a huge difference when you have all your support people there, all the Paris, all the security, all, that gives you a lot more flexibility, that gives you a lot more eyes. By doing, being fully staffed, we are able to be a lot more efficient. And that's a result of this. So more students, more students in school, more adults paying attention, more students feeling comfortable enough to report what you're uncomfortable with. And that's resulted in this number going up. Okay, next, we wanna talk to you real quick about future plans, and then we're gonna have the I of the five can come up here and tell you all about our celebrations. You know, that's in my category, the I of the five. Um, we think that this, we'll be coming to the school board here pretty soon. Uh, we think that this is gonna be approved through Title I through the state, that we will have junior and sophomore field trips this year. We will take all of our juniors and sophomores, will be eligible to go. The only qualification is that you need to pass all your classes third quarter. So, the sophomore juniors will go to the Omaha Zoo. And this is an overnight trip, we'll leave on Sunday, come back Monday. The juniors will go to the Denver Museum of Nature and Science, that's an overnight trip. Leave on a Sunday, come back Monday. Then, this summer, you know, we've always been very big on summer camps. We wanna piggyback our summer school. Summer school will be four days a week, Monday through Friday, for the month of June. We're gonna ask teachers who are passionate about a subject to create a class, something they like to teach. We're also reaching out to the community for cultural activities. So, you would have a four-day class, and that class will be two and a half hours a day, and it would be one of the weeks in June, so that, therefore, it's just a week long. So students can sign up for different classes for that month. They ride the summer school bus in, nine o'clock to eleven thirty, go to their class, whatever cultural activity, go to the hands-on deal. Eleven thirty to lunch, twelve to two, have a recreational activity, you know, softball, lacrosse, whatever activity we have for that day. And then that keeps students, and again, they're gonna be academic, arts, culture, and recreation included. And these are all the best practices for a successful camp. And the reason we wanna do this is to offset the summer slide. So when we're talking again about test scores, we're talking about learning, you know, we do know that students in a poverty environment that go home for the summer and have no school activities, no engagements with the school, will lose on average a month of their school learning. So, we can offset that with these classes, that students can join based on their own decisions. No requirements to it, yeah.
Any chance you can open that up to incoming freshmen, would help with transitioning?
Definitely. We can go around and sign kids up, you know, because the, the school buses go everywhere.
It's so hardcore.
You do? Okay. We just wanna piggyback all of the resources that we're using. The buses are going around, you know, instead of having five kids on a bus, we can do something a little bit more efficient. Okay, now, the thing about the classes, they'll be capped out, but yes, we can allow that. Okay, so we're, we're work, we will, that's something we need to put together. Again, these are future plans. Uh, expand the science department. So, we really think we're gonna come and talk to you later on, put together a plan for an additional science teacher, so that we can have AP Chemistry, AP Biology, along those lines. And we just know that Chemistry one and two are gonna really be filling up, you know? And we have an excellent science department, so we need to grow. Next one, Mike. Alright, English department expansion, we've already hired a, a Spanish teacher, so we are in position to do Literature one and two, and to expand our speech. Okay, and we're looking at the math department also. And just to let you know, we're not letting go of other things, our students this year will be going away to camps. You know, Upward Bound, Gear Up, In Man, USD, Health Career Camp, College Horizons, Cyber Security Camp, at Dakota State, South Dakota State School of Mines, and of course, Boys and Girls Basketball and Football Team Camp. And I think that's it, that's, that's it for future plans, and next, celebrations. So we're gonna turn this over to Mike, and, uh...
Alright, these are, again, some of the students that are always, uh, like to see in my now when you come and visit. Um, this is Sean Shepherd, he's the artist. Uh, last time you guys were at the middle school, last year, he was the one with the dot, with the movie, with his brother, um, he's...
He did it on the broken cell phone.
Exactly, and then you guys got him the, uh, equipment, which, Mike needs more equipment, but...
And he's decided to go to art school?
Yeah, he's already having, he had a scholarship last year from Black Hill State on the table, and he went and signed it and stuff like that. But we're in the process of contacting Black Hill State to see if that office is still there. I know USD wants him. Um, and he said something about Minnesota Morris now, today, when I talked to him, so, he's thinking about it at least. And last year, he didn't want no part of college, so...
And his twin brother's in today, he's really looking at, um...
United try.
United try. Wrong one, there you go. This is a tenth grader, Montoya makes room for that. Um, she won the LNI beating category. That's all hand-stitched, or hand-beaten. Um, she's, she hits every hollow in the area, she loves it, um, she goes and talks to other kids about it. She encourages people that attend, um, and she's a great role model for our students in our school, not only little kids, but...
Who worked for her, Gabby and Mr. Vinol?
Gabby, yep. Gabby and Mr. Vinol really help her, um, her family's traditional, so they do a lot of help as well. This is Arvish, these next three slides are, uh, from the LNI Business Plan. Uh, the first two, Arvish, she's a tenth grader, uh, Mrs. Biden works with these kids. She won her category at the Business Plan, she received, I wanna say, an iPhone...
iPhone seven.
iPhone seven, which is roughly a thousand dollars. And next one. And this is Maya, Toronto, she's our junior, she won first, first place. And again, an iPhone. I got to see the iPhone, it was great, uh, but the gal from, uh, the Business Plan, I don't remember what college it was, she came down, got a picture with the kids, and stuff like that, and presented that. This is Sam Grimshaw, our seventh, or eighth, or twelfth grader. He got third, you know, he won a five hundred dollar scholarship, he received third place, only because the technicality of this being a school, school project. Um, it wasn't an individual project, so to speak. But he's done everything with that Falcon grill and chill, and if you've eaten there, you're eating delight right there, so... And if you haven't eaten there, you can get your orders in on Tuesday, they'll be delivered on Wednesday. Um, this is our cheerleader, uh, Mrs. Dylan Redd. I was at the game, I've been at all the games where the cheerleaders are there, away or home. Um, and I can strongly say our cheerleaders are the best in the state, not just our region, but our state. Um, they are sitting there, they're smiling, I mean, they're smiling, they're not cheering. Um, they sit there and they acknowledge the other teams before the game, at halftime. They do a little cheer contest, or cheer-off, I guess they call it, but they're always laughing and giggling. Now, I'm not saying they're perfect together in practices, because they're girls, no. But, but you also have to remember this, they're professional when they're away from the school and, um, being ambassadors to our school.
I, I watched the men win, and they were awesome.
Yeah, I mean, they, they do great, it doesn't matter if scores were up by twenty or down by twenty, it's the same, same enthusiasm.
I just wanted to throw out there too that the cheerleaders haven't traveled in, ma, how many years, Mike?
Since those budget cuts when I was at Rosewood.
So they haven't traveled in many years, so shop, and the bus shop, and cheerleading folks have done a great job of making sure that these people are able to be at games that are away and on the road.
Uh, last semester, our sports and debate teams, not oral inter, excuse me, our South Dakota High School Activities Association, um, they're all state academics. So our students who were involved in oral inter, their GPA was above three point oh.
That was good.
As a group of. Volleyball team, same thing. Cross-country girls, cross-country boys. Our football team. And our celebrations, again, these are our students of the month for January. This is Precious Whitebolt, she's our freshman. This is King Horselick, and here's a little story about King. King's a sophomore, he's got a GPA about three nine. Uh, he lives in Spring Creek. I had the privilege of taking King home after a basketball contest, or practice. You go through St. Francis, you turn on Spring Creek Road, and you navigate to a dark spot, and you take a right at the blue, little, uh, turn signal, and you travel on a gravel, muddy, you know, slick road that reminds me of Lakeview driveway, and a mile and a half down the road, I drop him off. Um, he gets up at six o'clock in the morning, he's a lot like Danae, his cousin, that you guys know about. He gets up, walks to the bus stop where the pavement is, he carries a knife in there, just not because he likes to whittle on the way. Because he's gotta watch himself with, uh, wild dogs and coyotes and things of that nature. Before he gets on the bus, he doesn't bring the knife to school, he sticks it in a tree, gets on the bus, and does the same trip coming home. Uh, he's involved in sports, track, basketball, and, uh, football. His attendance, his attendance is immaculate, and heck, I don't think I've ever seen him not at school. But he's one of those kids that, he says maybe three words a day, okay? He's a quiet kid, very respectful kid, and he's one of the great stories in our school. This girl here, our junior, Kristen Cox, uh, she has a four point one one GPA. She's involved in college algebra, she's involved in college English one and two. Um, she's in our calculus class, or, excuse me, our AP Calc class, and she's a junior. Next year, we gotta find something for her, otherwise she's gonna walk away and just go to college without us. Um, she's in our, our, uh, HOSA, the, uh, nursing program, stuff like that, they have medicine. Um, she's gifted, she's very, very smart. I don't even like to talk to her because she's over my head. This is Dion Reynolds, he's from Wisconsin, he's been in our building now since October. Um, he's made some friends, still going through the process of getting better friends and that. But he's continued his education because he's got teachers that make relationships with him. Um, they don't let him fall behind, so... And he's a senior, he's gonna go to, I wanna say University of Wisconsin, but I can't remember for sure. This is Brandon Whipple. Vicky invited our kids over to, uh, E-Dog, or, or, uh, Boys with Brains, that are in athletics. So we sent about four kids, five kids over there, Danae being one of them, because he's from E-Dog, he had to go. Uh, and Brandon went as our filmol, filmologist, okay, our film guy. He does everything on his cell phone, he'll take videos, pictures, everything. He'll take games, if you see him at a basketball game, he's filming for a huddle. But, uh, he was there, he's gonna make a video too, Vicky, of that episode where our kids went out there. But I really appreciate you inviting us out there, because when our kids came back, they had nothing but great things to say. And they were so honored to be able to tell their stories of what happened to them, and how they cope with people when they point fingers at for their traditional hair.
But he's been, he's going to...
Yeah, and he's going to...
Vacuum boot camp in U S D.
I thought, wow.
And he is an actor. He's got his skills.
And he's based, uh, in my hill, yeah, he's that too.
And he has a YouTube channel, go to it, it's good.
Yeah. Um, Shania Hacker, she was, uh, Miss Rich got an email down to us saying how wonderful her poetry is, and that's a package you have in there.
That poetry package that you have.
Please, please do some reading and just kinda kick back and relax tonight, and just read some of her poetry. She's a gifted writer as well.
Really good stuff.
And she's a junior. This is our first graduate, okay? She's enrolled in the job corps now, uh, her name is, I can't remember.
Tormana.
Tormana, Iron Show. But she came in, went up to her class, edgenuity with the credit recovery, got it done, and got out. And she was so happy to come in and just say, I'm done. And, and, um, me, I go, oh, good, because tomorrow we can get this done. And she was, no, I'm done, yeah. So, it was awesome. Is that it?
That's it?
Alright, but again, these are just some of our celebrations of our students. Uh, Mr. Shipley's done a nice job of getting our media people out there to get with Phyllis, and sending her stuff, and starting with the Tribune, things of that nature. Um, honestly, I didn't read the, uh, the Argus leader, just because I know I'm from East River, I've never trusted the Argus leader. And now I know never to ever trust the Argus leader, so... And the families that are going through that stuff, I feel for them. Um, but they're, it's no different than Barbara Walsh who's going out to find her with, uh, that student out there.
Thank you, Miss Hannah. Okay, just briefly, I visited Killers Killers today, and they brought back some of their assessment reports. We went over them a little bit. Um, what we're gonna do next with them is then meet with the admin team, and they're gonna get their reports, buy their buildings, and then we're gonna go look at the task cards uh, for each of the buildings and build those, and go do those, um, with the admin. We want something that's systemized for the district. The good news is, is that we have adequate personnel, people in place. And a lot of times they'll find out that we don't have the number of people we need to do this. So we, we just need to do some training. The first training will happen on March... The first training will happen on March twenty eighth with the admin and with our staff to get some on that.
Thank you, guys.
And this is all just district speech that has been happening this year to help our teachers hone their craft. I also put on there, the district data tracker, but the one I put on there didn't have all the data on it. And the newest one is this one, which has our new map, mentor benchmarkers board. And something to take note on that they look really, really promising at the different buildings, the girls. And a lot of different buildings, so look at that. The reading, the reading is in the blue column and the yellow is the red. Last year for this year, so it's very, very important to see that. I'm sure the teachers will be able to see that. There's been lots of parent involvement engagement activities that have been happening throughout the district, especially elementary schools, they're doing classes with parents, and that seems to be very popular. Parents find us and they come to school with their children and learn how to do a skill. The last thing on there, I included a student data tracker on what we do at the elementary school, how to keep individual data on each student, and we've been talking about adding a different kind of data to that. So we'll track students, we can track also if their parents are coming to their parent teacher conferences, do their parents attend the family engagement night, has the teacher been trained in the class? Kind of put those pieces in, I'm sure the data will do.
I have a question on the summer PD.
Summer PD plan.
The locally based PD, that's just what we're offering, and those are everything we're offering?
No, that's just the, the start of their initiative. There will be response to classroom training, and we'll let the same teachers do it.
And then the state offered courses, that's giving people the opportunity.
To the state.
Okay, and what's the certified teacher professional development grant opportunity?
That's something a little bit different that Jane would probably want to do. They're all aligned to our district improvement plan. And it's tentative right now, I just want to do. Onward then to number seven. Second meeting and adoption of school board policy, G C O D Plan of Assistance for Professional Staff and G C O D D Plan of Assistance for Professional Staff Exited. Is there a motion to accept?
Can we have some questions or discussion in this?
Sure.
If you don't mind. And this is the second.
They're not motioning first. Is there a motion to accept or to approve at a dot? No? Okay, questions?
Oh, okay. Looking at this is, this is kind of a policy plan that we, and I went through and something that we didn't have, and that number three there, it says reasonable time should be allowed for the employee to correct the division. Do we have any kind of idea what we're thinking, what reasonable time is, or is there?
Should it be more specific with how much time is given instead of reasonable time being the descriptive in the policy, is that what you're saying?
Well, kind of, you know, yeah, if you got this when you had four months left at school and what you get reasonable amount of time, is that two months? I mean, I, I'm just trying to define it a little better, that's all I have.
Okay, man, mine is, I think that cart game before horse. I think there are people that are on professional contract in this district that would put on work improvements before there was even a policy put in place, which they should have never been. Their work improvements don't mean nothing because there's no policy put in place. But yet we still have people on professional contract on work improvement. But my deal is, if there's not a policy in place, how could they be on it? And how could somebody put them on it if there's not a policy in place?
Well, you can put someone on a, this is how I understand, you can put somebody on a plan of assistance at any time, and it doesn't have to be enough policy, because you put them on that because you want them to make improvements, that's the whole point.
So what's there, what's the policy then?
What's the deal with the policy?
Yeah, if you can go ahead and do it, then why do you want a policy so fast?
I didn't, it was the attorneys' advice that we have one, so that we could. It's just saying we don't have one for administrators, but if you want anything to improve, you can put them on a plan of assistance to help them improve. Because it's written down, it just gives it some more formalized ways to help them improve.
I agree, if we're running this, some more thought and more put into it as to the days are more descriptive than what it has currently now.
This is what copy I said.
I need some work.
Okay, moving on then. The twenty eighteen nineteen school calendar, first reading.
So this is the first reading of it? Can I hand out to the board and to the superintendent? Our policy, and if I may able to, we have a policy on school year calendar. And in that, it talks about, we do have a committee that's supposed to take care of this and present it to the board. So my question was, you know, and I know the committee has done it, but then all of a sudden we got a second calendar coming from a separate group, which to me, it only adds more confusion and more decision making to it. So I just think that if we've set up the calendar committee, if we have a policy on it, that's what we should be looking at, is what the calendar committee submitted. And that's what I want to say in the first, first reading or something of it, because we've had ESP, TCA, and administrators and all of that work on the committee, so. And also on the two calendars I had, January twenty eighteen should be twenty nineteen.
I guess I have a question, how many student contact days do we have this year?
One seventy-four.
So we're going to short students four days.
The calendars both go down to one seventy.
And then are we hearing from teachers that said they wanted more time, more time with kids, but now we're going to have less time, less time with kids?
The first calendar they came up with had one hundred and fifty-nine days.
Right.
Remember it there?
It was a draft based off of some ideas that we had. We've never, ever, you've sat on calendar, Melissa, we've never, ever just threw out a calendar and not had any discussion about it. I mean, that's, it seems like the water gets muddied every year with every change that gets made in one format or another. Calendar committee should, was supposed to be a discussion, they were supposed to, according to the policy, and the policy came right out of the agreement based off of negotiations, that the committee was the one that made the decision as to what the calendar looked like, and then you would approve or send us back. That's past practice, but I, it was based off of a discussion and a draft, our first calendar. It was never intended to be the calendar.
But it's simple, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, we got with this test, but those, are, there's some days that we included in this calendar for make them snow days in case we had to make them.
Yes.
So if the board doesn't want that, then there would be more days.
We would have to add more students to the record.
So where would you add the most student days? Because you're going to hear, I'm pretty sure you ain't going to get a kid to go beyond May. Even I didn't go beyond May when Glenn Barnes was the superintendent here, and this was the man who started school like the first of August, I think, a land in May, God bless his soul, but we were in school a heck of a lot with no snow days.
I think the hardest part about creating a calendar, number one, is we want to respect that, that fair time for families. So we don't want to start school before the fair, if possible. But we have so many hours that we have to combine into one calendar, and we're all used to having the holidays off because if, if people, if parents get the day off, they want their kids to have the day off. It's just kind of been how we do things around here. Parents want kids to have LNI off, well, there's two days right there. I mean, we have to give and take, and we have to be, I mean, I guess.
So going back to the policy then, this is the first reading, so then I would ask Sandra if, then I think that the board should look at this, and if we're not in agreement, then send our things back to the calendars committee to tweak it. Is, is that what I'm hearing from you, Tess?
I don't know if we've ev-
Because, because there are some things that I see that necessarily that I might not agree with, I'm sure there's things that other board members see. So in due diligence, then the board should actually look at this, and we should say as it is, we wouldn't approve it at second reading, and this is why, and these are the changes we would want to see. Is that, am I correct?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
And, and are you saying only the calendar committee was?
Well, I'm looking at this one too, because I mean, I think, and I think that people can propose anything to the calendar committee. I think that that's people, not just the calendar committee, is, was the calendar committee open to anybody to come and make a proposal to? Or was it closed? Because I mean, you're effectively making a whole school year for parents and kids based off five people in a room. Should you be getting your stakeholders' input?
That's why, if I may respond, that's why I brought along the policy, because that's what we have and that's kind of what we should be looking at, so.
But I think as board members do diligence, and as anybody in a school, you should be going out and asking the people you serve. This is a proposal, this is something that you could live with, this is something that, you know, in your community, this is how you want to send your kids to school.
Yeah, and that's what you have to look at too, now.
So, I guess I would be sharing this with parents that I know and saying, you know, what do you think of this?
Can we get the dates for the next calendar coming in?
I don't know if I have.
And I were asking. But the big thing, a big frustration I feel is no time for PD. If we want to make best practices, if we want to help our teachers in particular, please grab initiatives, if you want to carry over and be sustainable, to, to plan for that now, to honor our teachers' time, to build that collaboration and that time, that takes time, and and it's really, from feedback that I've found, this is not my words, this is harder, you know.
There's some PD time in these calendars.
Yeah, but it's not as much.
No, at the beginning and the end, it's not enough.
No, there's in between there too.
Not yet, unless you're allowed to be. Well, shouldn't this be out to the public?
We never have before.
Why wouldn't you?
We nev-, I, I don't know, we never have before.
Nothing in policy prevents it from being out in the public, does it? Not in the bar?
Well, you're not following your policy, you just burst it out to the public.
Well, why can't you get their input then? How are you supposed to get their input if you can't show it to them? I mean, it's not like top secret, is it? Like, the world's going to end if people see the whole calendar?
No, it's.
Then you might take months to get a calendar. If you get too many opinions, you're not going to get a calendar that would be acceptable for everybody.
In the past, I mean, I know on the computer on there, I mean, that's what the committee was for. You know, the admin, it was taken to the admin, they discussed it, they came up with their dates. Teachers came up with their dates, ESP came up with their, their dates, and then we went from there.
Right, it always went back to administrators and the back.
Was the calendar brought to you, Vicki, as an administrator?
But I, you know, I agree that we need more PD time, it's, we're going to see, I'm going to fit it in, but if you want to make changes, I came to the district, I was at the district to improve it, and we talked about trauma in foreign schools, and if you want to have a, be a trauma in foreign school district, we're going to have to have time to train everybody. And so I think we need to really consider putting in more PD in there somehow, I don't know. I agree with the more PD because, like, with the new math and the reading curriculum that we're implementing, like, getting pulled out of my classroom when I should be teaching them is frustrating. And not doing a one-time, beginning and ending, it's got to be.
Why was this not a school board thing where, you know, different teachers got a, I can't remember where it was at? Where they talked about how essential PD is throughout the year. It shouldn't be all grouped up at the beginning of the year, like, the school year shouldn't have like seven days of PD and then nothing throughout the year. That you should do that new teacher in service and, you know, some refreshers. But you shouldn't have seven or ten intense days of PD at the beginning of the year, at the end of the year. It should be spaced out throughout the year, that has proven to be more effective.
Who said that?
I know, but I just think that's what you said, because I saw that, I was not at that convention, I listened to.
Well, didn't we have a survey at the beginning of the, at some point of the survey, so.
We have the data of what people want, and it's hard to fit all the pieces in what people want, because different people want different things.
But there's also online PD that could be available for teachers to do it on their own. But if you want to focus on something as a district, I think we need to provide days near towards it.
It's been really rough not to have those issues.
So, if what we're saying, we want the calendar committee to meet again and come up with some proposals for what we're asking about on this.
Why don't you guys put your list of suggestions together of what you want to see, and then we can.
Okay. Well, I.
I have something to say about the PD. I am all for enough PD for the teachers, but this year we've had to deal with some PD during the school time and teaching time. And our whole school out there that is so short-staffed, there was a PD here, I don't know, a week or so ago, two weeks ago, that our teachers couldn't come in because we didn't have any coverage. So it's important to keep those days, so all teachers can attend.
Hard finding subs to cover for this, so.
We had nobody. There was three of them that did not.
Can I ask a question about?
I have a question for, can I ask, sorry to jump on you, with the sub thing, because every board meeting, we approve this big, long sub list. Where people put in, but then you call them, do they not show up? What's the deal with that?
So for teachers, if you look on the list, there's only one on there for Heda.
Yeah.
So if I've gone through, can you come out to Heda? No? No? No?
Okay.
I guess my question, Madam Chair, was, we have so many days of in-service, is that, is that really a requirement that maybe we could look at one of those days as?
In-service?
I'm not sure, but.
There is no state requirement for the number of in-services, right? There used to be, but there isn't anymore, so.
Don't we have in-service days though?
We used to, they just.
This calendar, there's no in-service days?
There's some at the beginning, there's four somewhere, like, beginning in November, beginning in January, and one at the end, but I mean. We don't have any this year, and it's been pretty hard.
I guess.
Okay, the first table, yes. Calendar business, and we have a work session, and we can come up with our list to give to the calendar committee of suggestions that we have. Okay? All right. Onward then, Ms. Lindsay.
Mr. Lindsay. Everybody? I'll be presenting briefly, so now it's given, wait, on this curriculum that we've been researching for social emotional for our students. And if we take it to you guys, the whole district can use it, so. We've put together, we have enough for, you know, for the four to take a look at. And what's in here is some examples from the curriculum itself, and I have one of these two up. And what's in here is some examples from the curriculum itself, and I have one of these to pass on to you guys. So part of the fellow's role is to be a liaison between our circle of learners, which we consider not only our students, but their families, the staff, the teachers, administration, and the community, really, number one. And so we know from visiting with these circle of learners, that there want and need and desire for social emotional curriculum. Um, Lakota language, Lakota culture is sort of the top three identified. Of course, you want our students to succeed academically. But if we miss the mark on providing these other aspects of the whole child, then academics suffer. And so with the fellowship, we believe as we are studying with our NACA model, uh, NACA has at their high school, we've, we heard some of the statistics early from our own districts. They succeed at ninety percent of their students graduate high school. Out of those ninety percent of their students that graduate, a hundred percent go to college. So they are our model, which we study in research and design. They have their own curriculum that they've developed because they have half a day staff PD every week. I know that's kind of hard in Rapid City where it just works out, we didn't have a day on Wednesdays. But I think I would, I mean, be frogging off this, this subject right before, maybe consider a half a day maybe. Cause I know sometimes a full day, it can kind of be intense and it can kind of, you know, a little raw. But, and that's just, um, something that since we study NACA, that's how they do their PD. And so this is an example, this is book four, so this is actually for fifth graders, so you can take a look. And then in this folder is kind of like the summary of the main chapters and stuff. And so we'd like for you to approve this, what we took on, we called it walking in bravery, because it is unique, cause it's developed and researched and designed by, um, local community members, local tribal people. It's specifically for northern plain, uh, Lakota sort of theory and aspect. And so we know that in according our child's identity with who they are, they can be proud and flourish in these other ways of life. So if this were to be approved, in particular with the grant schools, we would purchase this curriculum, oh, right away. Um, submit a PO tomorrow and hopefully get a return on it and then.
Yes.
Huh? Oh, well, there you go. So Miss Rancy is fine, um, I would actually redo and re-ask her because she just came out with a parent book as well. So that would be something I would ask her, I just emailed her today to send me an estimate to include the parent book. And this is what's me, because we want to engage our parents and our families in this sort of whole aspect of the whole child, of the whole family. And so this would allow us, if we were to purchase those, to be able to do some PD for our staff, but also for our community, which we know is a top identified, um, need and want. And so I encourage you to take a look at this, I would ask tonight for a, a vote or a decision, I don't know the formal, the formal process. But, um, um, we really appreciate it, I know it was, the LLC was kind of, you know.
Did I not return this for a couple of weeks?
Hang on to it.
Are you, are you need it right back?
Nope, hang on to it, hang on to it, take a look at it. Um, Cindy Ketchis, she would come in and help train our staff on it with the POs that we've purchased, which you guys will go over later for those long-term sustainable contracts for the grant. We were thinking at the beginning, you know, some PD here, PD there, but then we, um, over the break, we kind of reflected and came back that we'd like to approve long-term contracts to keep a consistent presence of those consultants within our schools. Not only for PD for our staff, which because of the grant, we kind of have a unique opportunity. So we'll be able to bring some monies in and stipend them like on a Saturday and Sunday. Um, that's, you know, and then how is that gonna be sustainable, maybe title fund or something, just to, to put it out there now. But, uh, we would PD some of our staff on the weekend, we have a retreat coming up, which our staff is so excited for, that they're gonna be able to attend, um, with the framework of building relationships within our, our school, within the families and, and staff to staff, you know, relationships and how they can work together to create, give our students success. Um, those are some of the things coming up with this grant. I would really, I don't know if you, you motion on it tonight?
I would make a motion to approve this curriculum.
Yeah, I'm so free if you guys wanna hang on to it. Um, I'll be, I'll be there.
I would return it when you get the parent one, cause I would really like to look at that one too. So I will return this when I prove it.
And so this is for fifth graders and she's building off, it starts at second grade. And right now it goes up to sixth or seventh, but there go, I mean, she's expanding on it to include kindergarten through high school. So this is an example, social emotional curriculum that we use for our students.
Okay. We have a motion by Melissa, seconded by Linda, to adopt it, approve it. All in favor?
Yes.
No, I don't like it.
Thanks, um, Jen, that was speaking, would you have any questions?
Well, I don't really like the new.
I'd like, I. And support the reassignment.
All right.
One.
And then I just have to talk about the substitute.
Substitute on.
So the, I want to exist.
Reassignment? Uh, I, I think I.
The reassignment.
I, I, I'm going to do that, he's going into exec and all of ours. All move to approve all of them, except those stated.
Is there a second? Okay? One in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Up the grade superintendent for offer certified contracts.
All move.
Made by Melissa. Is there a second?
Do you have a list?
No, it's just in the teacher page, when we go to teacher.
Oh, okay, got it.
There's seconds like that. All in favor?
Yes.
Do we have some discussion?
Sure.
I guess, I wanna see, what, what are we currently doing? Aren't we doing that right now? For everything I see, I don't see where the board's been doing any offering this whole last school, school year. So to me, what has changed?
Nothing, we just renew it every year. At this time, it just gets renewed.
It just renews, I think the board wants to change it.
Where is that policy or it's just that we've done that before? I, I still, that's just my opinion, but I don't concur with the school boards here. It's time that we should do our own, too, so. That was only my point, so.
Okay. First by Melissa, seconded by Jen. All in favor?
Yes.
No.
Upcoming meetings, our next regular board meeting is Monday, February twenty-sixth. At five thirty-two in the curriculum set. And we need a motion then to go into executive session.
A five-minute break, hold second to your job. Hold the old break.
Let me take a five-minute break. Um, Melissa.
Hi, Jen. And, uh, brought me a mini candy bar, but we're not sharing it.
All in favor?
Yes.